To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay. We'll start the roll call. Mike Bollier.
Mike Bollier, Hebron.
Mike Sharon. Joe Cluddy.
Joe Cluddy, Hebron.
Kirsten Erlenson.
Kirsten Erlenson, Andover.
Pam Farington. Carrie Fralino. Drew Galfin.
Drew Galfin, Marlboro.
Gabe Marks.
Gabe Marks, Hebron.
Amy Romanchuk.
Amy Romanchuk, Marlboro.
Scott Soyatt.
Scott Soyatt, Andover.
Brianna Adipoku.
Senior.
Andover.
Yusuf Ahmed.
Yusuf Ahmed, Junior.
And Avery Siroviak.
Avery Siroviak, Avery.
Great. And Heather Summer from Hebron. Okay, so, public comment. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro community engagement and attendance at board public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the board may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the board is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discuss only matters on the agenda, the board is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Is there anybody online that would like to make public comment? We're good. Anybody in the room that would like to make public comment? Okay. Item four is adding and deleting any agenda items for tonight?
Actually, if you've had time to look at it, I'd love to hear a report on how the Columbia students are.
I didn't have time to put together something. I could certainly.
I don't want a presentation, just, you know.
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about it, for sure.
You can add that to.
Yeah, I'll just do my superintendent's report.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. And we have the student representative reports.
I'll go first. At the high school, we've got a few events worth mentioning, including the upcoming Power of Words event this Wednesday for the sophomores, where we teach them about the power of their words. And they take part in a few small and big activities, helping them understand and create unity in their class and the school. We've got state champ volleyball that just happened. We got state champion. That's awesome. Our great volleyball team seems like, what, or like, one of like 100. We've got a food drive that I believe just ended on the 16th. SOAR hosting, SOAR and the Leo's Club hosting drives for good causes. And on the 25th Tuesday, we've got a blood drive. So if anybody here wants to give blood, go to me.
And some other things happening is the DECA DC trip. So the students of DECA are going to DC this weekend. And they're doing activities to prepare for the state DECA conference. And they're also going to learn about other business concepts. Also, DECA has a toy drive coming up, where it's part of Operation Elf. So toys are going to go to families of military personnel that are in active duty right now. There's also a DECA cleanup that happened, where students went around and cleaned up the parking lots, vets, everything around the school. And finally, the Thanksgiving football game is also coming up. It's a really important game. It's the last game of the season. They're playing against Bacon Academy.
This week, we have Money Wars, which is a competition between teams to see who can raise the most money for charity. So far, in Corey's belief. Last week, on Monday, we had our Veterans Day celebration for the Veterans' shared experiences. We told us about how it made them who they were today. We also got seen military working dogs. And then eighth graders had an alternative high school event.
What kind of things do students do to raise money?
Well, you just bring money to school and it's points, and whoever, whatever team has the most points.
Got it.
So different, what you put into the container counts for different things. So a dollar counts for a certain number of points. Dimes count for a certain number of points. And you try to add up whoever gets the most points, but quarters.
Take away.
Take away points. So if you come in with quarters, you're actually.
That money's no good.
Yeah, you're deleting points, so that's why they call it Money Wars. They used to call them Penny Wars sometimes, I think, but we don't have pennies.
More pennies being made.
Yeah.
Okay, the chair report. We recognize last month, Gabe, Mike, and Joe, who are going to be leaving the board. And this is their last meeting, so we wanted to thank you guys again for all of the time that you put in. We're a little in panic mode about the facilities committee, but we'll be okay.
The whole committee's gone.
The whole committee is going. You can be assured we'll be calling. But thank you again for all your efforts. Want to congratulate Carrie Fralino and Pam Farington, who were reelected again to represent the town of Marlboro. And welcome. We have three newly elected board members from Hebron. Jessica Hall, Rudy Delafiori, and Lisa Tout, representing Hebron. And we welcome them. Thank you very much. We look forward to having you join us here next month. So thank you. As we all know, how fun it is to run for office. All right, and then Colin?
So I don't want to be too redundant. I also wanted to congratulate the volleyball team for their victory on Saturday. It was super exciting. We also had some success in some other sports. Our girls soccer team did really well, advanced fairly far. I think they went to the semifinals or quarterfinals, I think, in the state tournament. Our girls and boys team both did it, and then unfortunately lost in that round. Our cross-country team for the boys won 12th place, I think, for Class M. And our girls cross-country team got fourth in Class M. So we had a successful fall season for many of our teams. And as one of the students said, we have a football game, the last football game of the season, is against Colchester this weekend. One of the things that is just a great outcome of, one of the things that is just a great outcome of our volleyball season, besides our state championship, is the fact that they actually raised over $12,000 during the Dig Pink fundraiser, the booster program for the Side Out Foundation. And I was told that they have raised over $72,000 for that organization since we partnered with them several years ago. So just a great testament to the Ram community and how generous the entire community is. Some of the students noted, we had Veterans Day recognized, both the middle school and the high school. It was great. I think the middle school had 50 or 60 vets that actually came that day, so it was a great turnout. It's a little bit of a different structure at the high school. We have a panel of vets that speak to two grade levels and another panel of vets speaking to the other two grade levels and just talk about their experiences serving. We appreciate them coming here and sharing those stories with us. Had some great performances over the past month. Shortly after our last board meeting, I think that Thursday, we had our concert for the band and choral programs for both the middle school and the high school. It was great. They pack a lot into a very short period of time, but I love hearing our fine, I'm sorry, performing artists perform for us. And then we had Unified Theater, we had Unified Theater students come and perform for us at our last board meeting, but the entire performance knocked it out of ballpark. It was great to see those kids up there doing what they love. It was really, really good. We did have a program subcommittee. I'm going to just talk about it briefly here because of the fact that we've actually taken that part of the subcommittee reports off of the, as a standing agenda item, because most of the committee reports are actually shared out as full agenda items. But that isn't the case for program. We had a meeting about two weeks ago, and we talked about five new courses that we're going to introduce to the Educational Opportunities Handbook at the high school. We have a firefighter course, which sounds awesome. AP Business Principles, AP Cybersecurity, Intro to Marine Science, and Music Sampler. Those are five new classes, again, that we anticipate putting into the Program of Studies for next year. More information will be shared in the budget book, as I always do, about new courses being added to the Program of Studies. Another exciting thing regarding classes at the high school is we recently had a teacher get cross-endorsed, so that she is now certified to be able to teach food culinary classes. We haven't offered those classes for some time, because finding people with that certification is very, very challenging. So we're super excited that Christopher Penrose was able to go out and get the necessary endorsements. And we're hoping to be able to offer that, because we do think that there's going to be some good student interest in that, good life skills being learned here at school. And yeah, I would also just echo the thank you and goodbyes to Mike, Gabe, and Joe. We gave them some gifts last week, because we, you know, sometimes we're not quite sure if they're going to show up to the last meeting after the election, but we appreciate all three of you being here tonight. The last thing is certainly an update on our transition of our Columbia students who had identified Ram as their school of choice. The first thing I'll say is, we're really fortunate. We actually had, after we had set the budget with the anticipated number of students, we actually had another student who decided to come in. So our enrollment numbers are higher than we initially expected them to be. And again, I'm hoping that those numbers continue to grow. It's been a really great transition. I've spoken at length with the high school administration about it, just checking in, how those kids doing. They had individual meetings. The assistant principals had meetings with each of the Columbia students just to, at the onset of the school year, just to check in with them, make sure that they were feeling comfortable, they were feeling welcomed, and we wanted to make sure that they were having a good transition. And the feedback that we received from them was very positive. I'm working with the high school administration right now to put together a survey that we want to actually send to the Columbia families that identified Ram. We want to get the parents' perspective as well, find out what did we do well? What was something that attracted Ram, or made Ram an attractive choice for you all? What could we do better to help ease any anxiety that your student might be feeling about coming into Ram High School? So we anticipate having that hopefully put together in the next couple of weeks and getting it out to those families. We are also already in what I would consider marketing mode as well, because we do want to have, you know, a larger number of students choose Ram. And I'm optimistic that that'll be the case. One of our wonderful art teachers, Shelley Oswiki, at the high school, who's going to be presenting tonight about The Rambler, along with Ms. Clifton. She is going to, she's working on putting together a promotional video. She did a great slide deck for last year's parent presentation and student presentation. And we put together a booklet based off of the slide deck that she put together. The content, a lot of the narratives and information was shared by department coordinators and administration. Shelley did her magic and made it just look phenomenal in the presentation, which actually, we should note that it's been being recognized by Cabe as we. We put that forward for a Cabe Communication Award, and we were actually selected to receive the Cabe Communication Awards. So we will be recognized for that this weekend when we go to the Cabe Caps Convention on Friday and Saturday, which is wonderful. So I'm sure that we will be sending in the finished product video that Shelley's been working on and is going to continue to be working on for us. So we appreciate Shelley doing that. So that's, yeah, it's been a really good transition. We're just constantly looking to make sure that we can improve it and, again, try to make Ram as attractive of an option as we can for our students from Columbia. Thank you.
That brings us to the student program spotlight for The Rambler.
So as I noted, we have a couple of teachers with us who have been wonderful enough to bring some students with them as well. Shelley Oswiki and Meg Clifton teach our journalism class. Just a little anecdote. One of my first introductions to Ram after I had been identified as the superintendent of schools was getting an email from a journalism student who said, hey, Mr. McNamara, you know, I'm a journalism student and we're putting together a story about you coming into Ram. And so it was literally one of my first introductions was being in The Rambler. And I remember when I first came and brought it home, my wife's like, your school does a magazine? That's amazing! And it is. It's an amazing thing that they do. And the students and staff are here to talk about how they put that together for us, and we appreciate you being here. So thanks so much.
I have some older ones, because we're currently in our first issue, so if you want to take one of them past around so you can get an idea of what it looks like.
Shelley and I just wanted to do quick introductions of us and then over to the students. I'm Meg Clifton. This is my 21st year teaching at Ram. And this is my 19th year working with Shelley on the various iterations of the student journalism publications. I handle the writing and the scripting and the interviewing side of things. As the English teacher, the kids who take the class for a full year get half an English credit. And so I handle, kind of, like I said, the writing and the communication side of things.
I'm Shelley Oswiki. This is my 21st year as well. It's hard to admit. I've been involved with journalism in its various ways for 20 years. And I'm largely in charge of the graphic design side of that and the video editing side, which that came on later. It was both part of its initial journalism class and then separated for a while, and then we brought it back together. So largely, I'm in charge of, to make sure it looks all good.
And so at this point, we're going to introduce our two students, who are going to give you a little presentation about the news packages we do and The Rambler magazine.
I'm Annalise Jordan, and I'm a sophomore. I've been doing journalism for two years now. And it has helped me have more opportunities that I wouldn't get with other electives.
I'm Emmy Melquist. This is my first year in journalism. I'm a senior. And I decided to take the class, because I've been in yearbook club all four years of high school. So I thought it would help me more with the journalism side of yearbook. And it has. So what we do in journalism, it's bullet pointed on the side there, but to just go a little bit more in depth. For filming techniques, we work a lot with different camera shots, different shots that help us tell the story that we're reporting on more. We work on framing, like telling, putting the subject in a certain place. We work on setting up the cameras, which actually me and Annalise are doing in this photo up here, which I think is funny. And for more of the writing stuff, we get to write scripts for our interviews, turn those scripts into articles. And it's just really useful, because it's really different from English class, where we're not, we're writing a piece to be submitted for a grade for only the teacher to see. While for The Rambler, we get to put it out to a larger audience. And that's really cool. For design skills, we learn how to use a lot of professional. Software, thank you. We learn how to use a lot of professional software, like InDesign, Adobe InDesign, and we get to learn the basics of graphic design.
For making the video news package, it's based on what you actually want to do and not just like what you do in like English class, where like you're reading a book and you have to report on it. It's like topics that you want to learn more about and like what your peers want to learn about. So you get to pick your topic, and then it goes into four different categories, which is Ram life, student life, sports, and arts and entertainment. And then, once we get our topic that we want to do, we put it into like a Google Doc, where it's like you figure out who you want to interview, and then what you are planning on asking them. So you ask them questions, and then they kind of like talk about, like you said. And then for setting up the interviews, you set up a camera, a memory card, a tripod, lighting, and a microphone. And then you start asking them the questions.
So another really crucial part of our news packages is B-roll, which has a lot of uses, but the two main reasons for why it's used in the news packages that we do is for an establishing shot, which shows like where the story takes place. Usually taking place at Ram, so a lot of my projects have started with just kind of a video of the school. And then the other thing that it's used most commonly for is just a background video to play behind a voiceover. So. That one's pretty self-explanatory. If we're going more in-depth into some of the topics covered in the interviews, then you want a nice video behind it to kind of help be more descriptive. And then we film the interviews. So the video, I forget that it's on two screens. The videos up here, the top one is in just a regular B-roll clip with like no sound that is used, is like taken for the purpose of putting a voiceover over it. And then the second one is an interview that I conducted for the Drum United program at Ram, which is what I wrote my first article on. And we're usually not, we're usually encouraged not to interview other people in our journalism class for the sake of like getting out there more and becoming more comfortable talking to other people and interviewing them. But Vivian is the director of the backstage aspect of Drum United. And I've been to many of those interviews. So she's wonderful and agreed to let me do that. And then we upload all the videos into the actual program reuse for putting the news packages together.
For writing a script, you pull important quotes that like really like have a good purpose on like your topic. And you, yeah, you pull those from interviews. And then for the, over the B-roll, you put the voiceover, which is usually an introduction to what the quote is saying.
All right. And going off what Annalise said, we put the video package together using iMovie, which is when we pull the clips of our interviews that we chose to use. And we organize them however we see fit to kind of get our point across, whichever feels right to us. We edit the video clips, insert the audio, make sure everyone lines up. No one wants to watch a video where like someone's mouth is moving and the sound's delayed a little bit. So we do that, and then when it's done, we export it and our advisors upload them to a private YouTube channel. And this is a news package on the new safety officers we did for our first thing.
Ram students are seeing some new faces this year with the addition of four new safety officers. The safety officers are taking over a variety of jobs, which were previously done by other office staff.
Their primary responsibility at the middle school and at the high school is to vet any visitors that come in the building and have accountability for individuals that are coming and leaving the building. And that's inclusive of visitors, but also of students. So it's a huge priority.
In addition to keeping an eye on who comes and goes, the safety officers will also be monitoring the halls, making sure students are always where they're supposed to be.
The, you know, premise is for students to feel safe, so that they can focus on the learning. So if that's happening, then that's only a positive thing, as well as, you know, building relationships with the offices too, having four more people in the building who are there for you to support you.
The addition of these new safety officers has earned mixed reactions from the students.
I feel good. I feel safe.
I feel like they feel violated maybe, because I heard that they go in the bathrooms and stuff. And I feel like some people are uncomfortable by the idea that there's a lot of people walking around the school, but I heard some people like the positive impact, because they feel more safe.
No particular way at the moment, not negative nor particularly positive, just they happen to be here.
It makes me feel safer, especially with all the things going on in the world right now.
The officers say they want students to remember that they're here for them and not against them.
We're not here to get anybody in trouble. We're not here to jam people up. The key thing that we want to do, or I want to do, is develop relationships and help out if I can.
Reporting from Ram High School, this is Rosalie Kelly with Rambler News.
What goes into the process of making The Rambler? You have to convert the script into print article format, which is usually kind of like copy and paste the things that you said in the script, but you add more details and like descriptions to them, since you don't have the video aspect to like go along and kind of describe what you're saying as well. And then we take photographs of the topic, and then we put that into our layout, which we make on Adobe InDesign. And that's where we make our whole magazine.
Great. As for the process, when we're putting together stuff on InDesign, we have to write a headline and photo captions. Headline just kind of sums up what the whole article is about, and the photo captions serve to like identify the people in the photo, identify what they're doing, maybe the date and time, pretty much any relevant information. Then we format the text so that it looks the way we want it to. The QR code that when scanned will take you to the news package that goes along with the article is at the bottom corner of the page, so that anyone who is reading it and wants to see like the actual interviews can do so. We trade, we kind of trade pages with other people so that we can have our templates reviewed and then review others as well, just have another set of eyes on it. And then we send it to print at Spectrum Printing and we cover it.
The cover and the backside of The Rambler is original artwork that comes from the students in Ram. So it comes from their photography classes, painting, or AP art classes. And it usually goes along with the theme that The Rambler has. Most of the time, it's like seasons, but it can also be like academic things.
Great. And then the audience, basically how we get it out to people. We distribute it to students during all three lunchways, because yeah, it's sent through email, but. Because yeah, it's sent through email, but I don't know about other students. But the first thing I do when I get home on Friday is not check my email for a long time. So we just pass those out at lunch to make sure, to give people the opportunity to read them. We put them in staff mailboxes and like other various locations around the school so that like faculty and even like visitors who come in have the opportunity to read the articles that we make. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
For the artwork on the front and the back of the magazine, do you guys have to go to the students and ask them specifically to draw something that goes along with a newsletter? Or do you just collect what you want?
Sometimes, but usually artwork is like submitted.
We run Journalism Club as well, and so we'll like send out a call for like, hey, you know, we're looking for artwork or photography that might be related to the autumn. And then sometimes students can submit that way.
Do you plan to pursue a career in journalism?
I have wanted to for a long time.
What, what do you think you want to do?
Well, when I was younger, I really wanted to be a journalist. I thought that it was like really cool and like it would expose me to a lot of things. I think that's kind of what it is doing now. But now I want to be an FBI agent.
Um, I don't necessarily want to, but it's definitely helped me with like getting out there and communicating with people, whether it's like interviewing people or like setting up the interviews, reaching out to people. But that's definitely helped me develop that skill, which will inevitably help me in the future.
Great.
Your public speaking is very impressive.
Thank you.
How much time do you spend collecting B-rolls?
More than what? Yeah, a couple days. We usually, we try to get, I forget what the actual ratios are, but we try to get more than we actually end up using, more than we need just as kind of a rule of thumb, so we can be really selective with what we want to have in our video.
We get the Rambler through email and it's great. Look at it every week.
Well, so that, that Rambler is the weekly newsletter that gets set up. They do that as well.
Yeah, yeah. So they do the more like the Journalism Club kind of does that. With Shelley and I kind of put that together. So sometimes the class will pull stuff that the students are doing in class and be like, oh, we're going to put this in the newsletter as well. So yeah.
The safety officers actually visit the newsletter.
Yeah.
Yeah, I usually get copies of when they put them out because you guys said it shortly after Thanksgiving.
Oh yeah, so the, probably the first week of December is when you'll get the first Rambler magazine for this semester.
Yeah, I'll bring them down and get them out. How, how do you guys come up with story ideas? Is it like you sit down collectively as a group and kind of toss different ideas around? Or is it usually a single person says, I want to write about this? I remember a couple of years ago, it was a really interesting article. Well, there was like an article about tattoos, which I found to be interesting. And then there was an interesting article that you guys did, I think last year about fixing cars and having like, so, and I mean this in a good way, the story ideas are all over the place, which is very, very interesting. But is it something that like individual people come up with or just?
Yeah, okay. So you have to like pick from the four, not pick, but like it has like fit in the four categories, which is very wide range. But whatever people like really think of, also we do throw out like ideas in class of like for people that don't really have ideas. But for this Rambler, I'm personally doing the College and Career Fair. And I did that last year too. And I really like reporting on that because I like learning a lot more about that. But, um, what are you doing?
I, I chose to roll, right, oh my goodness. I wrote my article on the Drama United show. So I think definitely a lot of, and I know students in the past who like participated in drama club or like certain activities. The extracurriculars and classes that you're a part of is definitely a really good jumping off point, especially, yeah. So I'm the head director for Drama United. So I was like, what better thing to write about? That's something I already have done for a very long time.
Who got to interview you?
Yeah. And my friend from last year, she did something about jelly cats as a stuffed animal. And she, she really liked jelly cats. So it was, it's very like personal, but also like can like reach out to a wide range of people.
She's telling me what jelly cat is.
Which is a really poor explanation.
Have to share where the rest was like.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you guys. It was a great job.
And I did give them the heads up that they did not have to feel compelled to stay.
You'd be fascinated.
You could write a story about it. Write a story about it. Thank you all so much for being here. We appreciate it.
All right. So, oh, I'm sorry.
No, we're just gonna say, someone at the, like Tom at the end, can you just grab the magazines?
Yo, absolutely. That's right. I'll bring them down to your room. No problem.
We keep an archive in the classrooms of students and like look at the previous years.
I'd love it if we could get copies of these.
Absolutely, yeah. Thanks so much.
Okay, that brings us to item nine, the Consent Agenda.
So there's a, there's a couple of things in the Consent Agenda. There are minutes of our last meeting on October 20th. There were some changes. Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry, there were changes for the policies. I'm sorry.
That's fine. I just make a motion. I moved the board, approved the Consent Agenda with two following amendments. One, you've got this electronic thing. The phrase of the board, of the board shall be stricken from the first sentence of Section 4, Policy 9313. And the last sentence of Section 1B, the definition of caucus, shall be stricken from Policy 9345. But that's a motion. The rationale is that I just think we should keep a clear dividing line between policy and regulations. So the regulations aren't regulations of the board. That's, it just felt wrong. And I think I mentioned that at our policy meeting, but I didn't notice that. I wasn't at last meeting. And the second one is the caucus language because it doesn't actually properly describe us. If you read that language, it, it talks about members of, members of a single political subdivision of the state. Or not, from three separate towns. And there's just no reason to have the definition of caucus in there. Should just take it out when it's, because it doesn't apply. And so that's, that's my suggestion anyway. We approve these, but make those two very minor changes.
Where's the caucus reference again?
It's in 9345, Section 1B, the last, last sentence.
Yeah. Oops, sorry. So you made the motion. Do we have a second?
To approve it with these changes. A second.
So that's Gabe Marks. So then discussion on that. Anybody, did you have something else through or no?
Well, I'm concerned about the caucus. I mean, are we taking away that option?
No. No, 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 just the definition part. Just, just the definition of caucus in the last sentence of 1B.
Oh, okay. So yes, all right. So get that.
Yeah, just it doesn't actually, it's, it's not accurate to us. And that, if that is state statute law, that actually should probably be updated to capture, you know? Actually, I don't know if we could caucus. Of all the Democrats on the regional board could caucus. Maybe they can. You can, on a regional board. I, I know you can for local boards. Okay.
So why is it incorrect though? Are we not?
We're not all members of a single political subdivision.
Or political subdivision. Not, not necessarily just chunks of it. So we don't have to be.
But we're not any of the others either. I don't have it open in front of me, but.
We're not a public agency sort of?
We are a public agency. This is the board.
Within the state?
Yes.
So we are a public agency within the state or something we're not. Doesn't matter because the ors doesn't mean both, right? True statement. One can be true, the other can be false.
1B.
I just be nervous.
It's just a, it's just a definition that's in there.
Yeah. To clarify what caucus means, but I, I think it still works. I mean, I don't think it's incorrect.
A public agency within the state or a political subdivision. I'm pretty sure that means a state agency or an agency of the state or an agency of, of a, of a subdivision. So Andover's Democrats could, could caucus on something. But I just, I just don't think it adds anything to here and I think it's slightly problematic language.
But you're gonna leave the word caucus in B without a definition then?
Sure, but it's a standard, you know, the thing in the statute still apply. It's just whether we're repeating them or we're defining them. I, I just feel like we are not members of a, a public agency within the state.
Because the board is a public, I'm just, you know, I don't want to split too many hairs and waste too much time. But if we are a public agency as a board, we are within the state.
Okay, I, I, I parse it differently. I, I say the state or a political subdivision.
So one or the other. Doesn't have to be both.
We're, but we're not either. We're not a public agency of the state and we're not a public agency of a subdivision of the state.
So how, what are we a public agency of?
We're a regional agency. I don't know what to call it, but.
Okay, I see what you're saying. All right. I'm getting it now. I, I'm trying to understand what you're doing.
All right.
If, if there's objection, I, I, we can certainly change the motion. I just.
Yeah, I don't have any, I mean, the word caucus is still in there. It's just remains undefined. I guess, you know, the parties could caucus as they want. I just don't.
It's defined in Connecticut Journal Statutes.
Right, yeah, yeah. So we don't have to worry about it.
No.
Okay, so we'll take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
I think.
So do I have to do a? Yep. Mike Bullier?
Aye.
Mike Sharon?
Abstain.
Joe Coletti?
Aye.
Kirsten Erlinson? Pam Tharrington?
Aye.
Carrie Fralino? Drew Golfen?
Aye.
Gabe Marks?
Aye.
Amy Romanchuk? Scott Soyet?
Aye.
And Heather Summer, aye. Okay. The motion passes for, that was item nine, the Consent Agenda. Brings us to new and unfinished business.
So the first agenda item for that is just discussion of possible action regarding our FSA benefit plan or flexible spending, flexible spending account benefit plan. Do you want to just kind of talk a little bit about this?
Sure. So this gives our employees some benefits that the IRS allows them to have. So important here is we have a high deductible health plan with an HSA. So the medical reimbursement is not usually the draw. Since we already have the HSA, the two can't go together. It's more so the dependent care for families. But since they've raised limits, it's nice to keep the limits because we do have folks who don't have the high deductible health plan that can make use of the medical reimbursement that come along.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
So do we have a motion to, to approve the increases to the contribution limits of employee flexible spending accounts to align with the IRS limits as recommended? And for the superintendent to sign the certificate of resolution authorizing these changes on behalf of this Regional School District 8 Board of Education?
So moved.
Mike Bullier, do we have a second? Gabe Marks? Any other discussion on that? All in favor? All right.
So the next one is just, we wanted to provide an update to the, to the entire board about the generator project. As board members know, this is a project that started about a year and a half ago. I think we've been kind of meeting on this. It's been an ongoing thing where the three towns procured a grant, combined efforts to procure a grant to put a generator, to replace the generator that we have that will essentially power all of Ram High School, this new generator, which is better than what we have right now, which is, our current generator powers just our emergency systems and emergency lighting. And it will continue to power the emergency systems and emergency lighting of Ram Middle School. We've made good progress. The PBC has really been spearheading this effort. And Mike Sharon and Mike Schlehofer and myself have been involved in this process as well. And Mike, if you want to maybe take it over and just talk a little bit about where we are, if you're okay with that?
Sure. Yeah, as recent as last week, we had a vote with the Public Building Committee, which is actually executing the plan on behalf of the region to incorporate the, the generator. We're awarding the electrical contract or at least the pre-work electrical contract. There'll be additional phases coming up. This is to put in conduit before concrete placement. It involves some excavation. Some of the good news here, we don't require, well, we may require a test of the main sub-panel. I can't remember the exact terminology.
Mike's on it.
Oh, okay, Mike's on. But that was a scheduled test anyway, but we may find that we have to do that a little earlier than planned. But those costs are, would have been incurred anyway by the region, so it's not an increase. The other thing coming up is some of the foundation work will be done. I think we've got footings and pads. And those are going in place for a advance order on the generator itself, which I think is scheduled to arrive in May-ish, April, May time. Michael, what did I miss?
You got the switch, it's the switchgear testing is what it's called. And we're expected to, we're supposed to be here end of, end of May, beginning of June at the rigging yard, the generator. So we're aiming for placement sometime over July and taking ownership of it, I believe, like the first week or no, the last week of August, right before school starts.
So that, that's the switchgear testing that he, he was talking about. We were slated and planning on doing it after July 1, after this upcoming July 1. We actually put funding into the budget for next year. So we're just essentially moving that work prior to the July 1 rollover of the budget. So it's just, it might be money that we have to use out of this year's budget instead of next year's budget. If we get to that point, then obviously, and if the budget has been settled, we could just take that. It's, it's, it's not a significant amount. Michael, is it?
The, the total for the switchgear testing and maintenance is eighteen, eighteen four, eighteen thousand four hundred bucks.
So it's, we're not particularly concerned if we have to find eighteen thousand dollars in this year's budget. We've gotten some additional tuition funding, as I've said, so we're gonna be. Oh, she always stops me. I get excited when I get tuitioned because I'm thinking, let's spend it. But anyways, I, I feel confident that if we get to the place where we need to find eighteen thousand dollars, she'll be able to do it. So it's not an issue. Any questions for anybody or anyone more?
No, I think that's it. Yeah. I mean, the board will have to identify a candidate to participate in the PBC meetings.
Yeah.
So.
Look at the smile on your face.
Yeah.
Or we could appoint Michael and just act as a special ambassador. Ambassador, here we go.
Okay. Item 10.3, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Budget Development for Capital Projects Requiring Bonding.
Yeah, so, so this was a topic of, of our last Facilities and Finance Joint Subcommittee meeting, which we actually just had last week. And I believe it was our September meeting, we presented some information to the board after a facilities finance meeting, talked about projects that we anticipate going out to bonding for. We're looking at next year being that process of going through the. We're looking at next year being that process of going through the bonding process and ultimately going to hopefully what will be a successful referendum to fund the projects that we need to get funded. We had an idea, we knew what projects needed to be done. We had prioritized those projects, but what we didn't have for any of those projects, what I would simply say is a true cost for what we would need to actually put down for dollar amounts for what we're going to need to bond for. So we went out and met with an organization called Friar, an architectural firm, and they did a presentation for Evo, Michael Schlehofer and I. And then they came and presented to the Facilities and Finance Subcommittee last week about the work that they would do, which is essentially develop the actual budget for what those projects would be. And then if it's going to be timed out where we're not doing all of them immediately, they actually can apply a certain inflationary value to each of the projects and give us an idea of what it might be if we do it two years later or three years later. So we feel very comfortable with this group. I think the, I don't want to speak on behalf of the committee members, but there seemed to be an endorsement to move forward with them.
Yeah, yeah, they seem like they're a good organization. The other thing that I thought was really valuable was their ability to identify portions of the activities that could potentially be grant funded.
Yeah.
Right? So that could offset some of our financial commitment.
Yeah.
So help us prioritize those.
And they help identify the state reimbursement, the projects that are eligible for state reimbursement, what the percentage of the reimbursement would be. This is an organization that does a lot with schools and municipalities, so this is their wheelhouse really. And basically, this, the total cost, the anticipated cost is in the memo that Michael Schlehofer wrote, it's enclosure ten point three. And the invoice is in there as well, or I should say their proposal is in there as well. It's about nineteen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. We're fortunate that we were under budget with our track project, so we do have some money available to us that we can move from the track project, replacement project into capital improvement bonding projects, which would be able to pay for this. We're excited to hopefully have the board make a motion and approve us to do that because I think we're going to engage with that pretty quickly once we get that transfer to happen. They, I think, like, we're gonna call them tomorrow and say, here to go.
And that's, that's the full cost of nineteen whatever?
Yeah, so. Yeah, correct. So you could see it's the full cost of what they described doing in the project. And then what they also do is they do include if there's additional things that we want them to do, they kind of give like a little bit of a laundry list of additional things. But what we've asked them to do and what we've discussed is outlining that in that total cost.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have to read it?
Uh, yeah.
The motion is to approve the reallocation of nineteen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars from the athletic track replacement project to the capital improvements bonding projects. And the first motion is Scott Soyet. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mike Sharon, any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, that motion passes. Brings us to the seed grant, the Special Education Enhancement Development.
Yeah, so this is, this is something that, you know, I'm not necessarily looking for any board action. I just felt it was really important to just appraise the board of kind of where where we are right now with regards to the efforts that I've taken to secure some of the seed grant funding. As I've communicated with the board separately, the, it's a new grant. It's called the seed grant. It stands for Special Education Enhancement and Development Grant. It's supposed to be a grant that supplements your budget as opposed to supplants it. So new things as opposed to just paying for things that we're already doing. The issue that we're having with getting any of the seed grant funding, which was intended for really school districts, all school districts across the state, is the fact that the distribution of the seed grant funding was, no money came to any regional school districts directly. Funding for the seed grant was given to each of the towns and local school districts. And the directive that was given by the state was, said something to the effect of regional school districts should work with local school districts to get an allocation of seed grant funding. With that being said, the local school districts had plans for their seed grant funding. And I certainly don't begrudge them for that. We have a tremendously positive, strong relationship with our three sending towns. I have a great relationship with the superintendents as well as the town managers. And, and, you know, I had some conversations with the local superintendents who essentially said, hey, you know, we were counting on this funding. We, you know, made some plans around having this funding. And what I said to them is, you know, my job is to advocate for regional school district eight. And the money that was allocated to each of the three towns was derived, that total amount came from a formula that was inclusive of pre-K to grade twelve students. So to me, that means some of that funding is meant for secondary grade students, seventh through twelfth for us. And I did meet with a person from the Connecticut State Department of Education who provided me with a pretty basic formula. You take the total allocation for the town, for each of the three towns, you divide that total allocation by the number of high-needs special education students. That gives you a per pupil allocation. And then I took the number of high-needs special education students enrolled at Ram. And I said, okay, well, if I multiply that per pupil allocation by the, by that, the number of high-needs special education students at Ram, here's the amount that I believe that Ram has coming to us. And made sense to me, but understandably so. Again, there was some concern about the fact that they had counted on having this money. In the end, it is completely up to the local school districts and towns whether or not we would receive any allocation as a regional school district. And I don't anticipate getting any of that funding this year. I've communicated with the towns and the, I've had conversations with members of the State Department of Education. I've had conversations and meetings with other regional school district superintendents, the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, the School Finance Project, State School Finance Project Executive Team. And in the long run, I am under the impression, and I believe it is a pretty widely held belief, that the way that they distributed the funds was not done so in a way that should have been done. Basically, they just used a process that they shouldn't have used. And unfortunately, we are not going to get an allocation this year. I, in a meeting that I had with, again, this State School and Finance Team as well as CAPS last week, they are advocating on behalf of regional school districts to change how the distribution process works of funding moving forward. This is meant to be a recurring grant. The funding is actually, I think, planning, there's plans for the funding amounts to be increased. It's a total amount of thirty million dollars this year to all of the school districts, all of the local school districts. I think it's supposed to be a greater amount next year. So I think it is important that they fix this so that we can get the funding that is intended to go, again, not just to the local districts, but also to regional school districts as well. So that was a lot. My mouth is dry. I'm gonna take a drink, but I can certainly entertain any questions of people if you'd like.
Just a couple of things. So the initial, when the initial grant money was given, all they said was to share it with, they didn't give any kind of a formula or anything?
No, they didn't give a formula to towns. It was, and I'm somewhat paraphrasing, but it really was like something as simple as regional school district should work with their local, local towns to receive an allocation of funding. It was something as simple as that. It was a memo that we received from the state. It was within a memo from the state.
They funded this like ECS money.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so rather than an actual granite.
Right, yeah. And this is just a, really has nothing to do with it. I was just looking here about the high need.
Yep.
Is that just a formula, fifty percent? I mean, how do you?
It is. It's a great question. And I don't know if I'll have the answer necessarily that makes sense, but basically, when I, I had a meeting with this woman from the State Department of Education who was helping with regards to the facilitation of the allocation distribution. And I said, can you explain the formula? And she said, you take the total number of special ed students in the district, and this is from last school year, so they're using last school year's numbers. And that total number of pre-K to grade twelve students in that district, just divide it by five, divide it by two, so it's fifty percent of your total number. They're not saying that that's an accurate number of what the high-needs students are versus non-high-needs student special ed, but that's just how they used it. I think you may have asked me in a separate communication, why didn't they just use the total number of special ed students? Well, they could have. They could have. It would have been just as easy to take the total number of pre-K students divided by that number. Your per pupil allocation would have been smaller, but it still would have.
And they didn't give any, they don't give any criteria of what is a high-needs special ed student as opposed to?
No.
A special ed student.
Correct.
So it doesn't have to do with parent support, doesn't have to do with, you don't know, nothing?
They didn't give any information to me.
Interesting.
Yeah.
And they don't even approve them. They just basically accept your, this is all you're doing.
Right, 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 yeah.
I think conversations that I've had with folks at the state, they recognize that this probably wasn't done well. So I would anticipate that they'll make some improvements on it next year. But they kind of recognized that this was a mess.
Yeah, I, again, I feel like I've done what I can and I don't anticipate on hounding anybody or like, I just, I've communicated, this is what I'm hoping. And, and, you know, I don't expect it to go anywhere beyond that. What I do plan on continuing to do is advocate that they change the way the funding is distributed next year. Like, I'm gonna reach out to state representatives and communicate and say, hey, you know, we didn't get any of this funding. And what I could tell you is the people from the State Department that I have spoken with said, yeah, it really wasn't intended to just only, like, it was intended to be made available for everybody.
So if they don't come up with a better way of dealing with it, because it's the State Department. I mean, whatever. Now that you know that this money is coming, we assume, is there a way to sit with the towns beforehand and come up with a reasonable way to get, I'm just wondering, you know, because I don't think we should be counting on the towns, I mean, on the, the states to actually do it in a timely manner. It could happen. I would be surprised, but just so the confusion of any of this, right, of the, you know, the you know, the elementary school, you know, while we thought this was, you know, just to avoid this in the future.
Yeah, I would, I would hope that if they don't change the way the funding is distributed, that we can have those positive conversations and say, let's figure out a way to come up with a way to do this. Again, the, the formula that I use, that very early simple formula is of, which is, here's the per pupil allocation. To me, that's a very simple, basic way to do it. You take the total number and you divide it by, and then you say, okay, elementary high-needs or total special ed is this number and total Ram is this number and just divide the number by a per pupil allocation.
Right, no, I don't even mean that. I just mean having the conversation before the money is coming out, right? Because that way it's, everybody kind of knows what they should be expecting and budgeting for.
You've actually started that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Spoken to the three towns?
I definitely have, I definitely have. The hard part is, we don't even know. So yes, I hope that process happens. The hard part for us to even say, well, this is how Ram is going to spend the money, if we can get it, is we don't know what the allocation is going to be. Because ultimately, we could say, well, we think we should get this much, but either the total allocation can be different to the towns. And then ultimately, the towns have complete and total say over how much we get, if any. But like, that was the one thing from the state was there's no obligation. So, and I completely agree, Pam, with your assessment of the State Department, so it's spot on, accurate.
Notwithstanding the legislation and its flaws, I'm disappointed to hear that our member towns don't feel like they need to share. I, there's something here, the only comment here is it's for Andover, it's the Finance Committee is going to decide. What's going on in Marlboro and Hebron? Don't these towns think they need to support Ram equity bill with their elementary schools?
I, I, I don't think that there is any, anything worse. I feel very fortunate because we have very supportive towns. I really think that we do. I think that this comes down to the local school districts were counting on the funding not having to be shared.
They didn't understand that it was based on an allocation all the way through to the twelfth grade?
I, I can't say that I ever heard this message, but it certainly may have been communicated was that what I heard from at least one superintendent was we were specifically told we wouldn't have to share it with the regional school districts. So what, and Pam can attest to this as well, miscommunication from the state is expected. So, so it's not, it wouldn't surprise me if that was communicated. So then, you know, somebody says, well, okay, great, we're going to get funding. Let's, let's plan on hiring a teacher. Let's plan on putting this program into place. It's going to cost us X amount, but hey, we expect a good portion of it to be covered under this grant, you know, whether it's hiring an additional special ed teacher, hiring a pair of educators who could, you know, so they're they're not supplanting, they're supplementing. They're going on top of what they, what they've previously had. And then all of a sudden, I say, hey, listen, I think almost half of that should be ours. They're gonna go, well, that's, that's gonna have a pretty big impact on them. That's gonna leave them in a bad.
So they already budgeted these numbers in their current school year budget?
Well, I don't think that they could have put it in this year's budget because nobody had these figures.
Yeah.
But they were counting on funding coming from the state in the way of this year.
For next year. No, no, for this year, the schools made their proposals. I talked to Andover Superintendent quite a bit about this. And they made their proposals, honestly, I think, without even considering the regional school system. They just told them, here's the money, here's here's, here's what their share for Andover is. And Andover heard Andover, not Andover as a, you know, regional and local school system. But it's not our three towns. It's pretty much everybody in the state. Everywhere the regional high school system have the same, same issue.
And that's exactly what I thought.
Yeah.
It was, it just, it was, this is what you're getting. There was no real talk of, it was like, this is what Andover gets, Marlboro gets, Hebron gets. No real talk of the regional part of it. That's what, that's what I've heard.
Right, right. So they made their plans and hired people or bought materials or whatever, so based on this. And then.
Based on a revenue stream. So it's in their budget of the revenue stream.
Well, grants are, grants happen a little differently.
Grants, yes, but it's anticipated money that would be offsetting their spending.
Right, right.
But I think, I mean, at this point, Collins.
Yes, they added something.
Right.
But they.
So they can parallel something they can't offset.
But it's still in their budget then.
It's not in the budget, so grants are separate, so.
Even the spending part of it.
Correct.
So this is a separate thing.
A separate revenue stream and a separate expenditure stream.
But already planned for the year.
Right.
Right, that's the key, right?
During the legislative process, everyone heard about seed. Everyone had an information of that seed was coming down the pike. It was this lovely email that came out with this chart of every town and money, but no regional school districts were on that chart. So when people saw Andover, Hebron or Marlboro, they saw dollar amounts and probably finalized their plans.
So at this point, from a town perspective, Colin has talked to the superintendents, he's talked to the town managers. I mean, they're on notice that this didn't go smoothly. So I would assume that next year it would be a much more open conversation.
Yeah, and yes, and in the conversations that I've had with at least the superintendents, it was, hey, like, we're counting on the money that for this year, and this goes to your question, babe, you know, we're counting on this money for this year.
But we have to understand that it's supposed to be out. If the state is not going to do it properly, then the towns need to come together and figure out how to do it. It's just, it's just the right way to do it. It's just unfortunate the way it was done this year. It's my understanding.
I agree.
So I'd like to make sure that we just do drop it. We don't pursue these things.
I have no intention of doing anything more about it.
Okay. I don't know if you realize, but it's caused some headaches in town. We're just already in huge tensions between the now former town manager and the superintendent. And this came up in the Board of Selectment meeting and where they didn't know what they were talking about is, you know, Selectment don't allow the education generally.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, that was conveyed to me as well. And what I, in my conversations that I had with Heather about this is, you know, we're looking at in total somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty nine thousand dollars. We could do some good stuff with thirty nine thousand dollars in Region Eight. And I said this to the other superintendents, like, I understand your position, but you have to understand my position, which is to advocate for the need. have to understand my position, which is to advocate for the needs and wants of, of teachers and staff and students in, in our district, and that's, so that's what I was doing. But I agree, like, I'm, there's no adversarial, you know, relationship between myself and the three towns and the superintendents, they did what they had to do, and I understand that, and I did what I had to do. But I have no intention of hounding anybody or anything like that, you know, saying, give me more money, or give me anything, so.
So I'm gonna move us on to item 10.5, the personnel report.
So just one resignation to share, Katie Duncan, a special ed teacher for Ram Middle School, resigned effective November 3rd. She had been employed by the district since August 26, 2019. This is personnel report.
Okay, 10.6 is first read of policies.
So there, I had a meeting with the policy subcommittee, I think it was a couple weeks ago, and the first one, which is a new policy, which is duties of the superintendent, the board may recall that there were some, a recommendation for removing some language or removing an old policy, but then there, there was a conversation at the policy subcommittee about, well, you know, maybe there would be a benefit to have a, a, a very high level outline of the work that the superintendent does. And so this is a first read, I brought this to the policy subcommittee, they were agreeable to the language in this one, in this draft policy that I shared with them. I could certainly take any questions if people have any about this one, but again, this was unanimously agreed upon to be good to move forward. I think I made a couple of adjustments based off of feedback that I got on the policy, but they were pretty minor. The next one, limits of authority, again, this is another one where we were looking to make a change to another policy, and we said, well, we can delete that, but we really should add some aspect of it there, and that was really around requests for information. So we found this existing limits of authority policy, I made a minor change in the front page, and on the second page, I just added a section for requests for information. So certainly I can take any questions about that, but again, this was one that went to the policy subcommittee and, and everybody was fine with it. The next one is policy 6, 6126, we currently have a policy called intercultural relations, which is pretty outdated, it was last revised in 2016. And, and really, what, what we, the, the terminology that we use and, and education, educators all across the, the state and country use is, really what we're talking about is cultural responsive instruction. And so we made some modifications based off of really that being the, the, the point of having this type of a, of a policy. And I identified a document called the Connecticut State Board of Education Position Statement on Cultural Responsive Education from 2021, and that's really one of the references that we drew a lot of this from. And so, again, the policy subcommittee was, was, was fine with this language as well. And the last one was simply a, a recommendation for deletion, this one talks about anonymous complaints that are received by the board. And what I said is, you know, we certainly, this is a process that we would utilize, or, you know, if information's brought to the attention of the board through an anonymous complaint, I would receive that and then do with it what is necessary and appropriate. But again, it's just not a necessary policy, so the, the recommendation of our legal counsel and myself is to, to eliminate that. So, and again, the policy subcommittee was in agreement.
Financials?
I'm happily done.
Right, well, in your handouts, enclosure 10.7A is the expenditure and revenue report as of October 31, 2025. So I'm going to tell you that there is a proposed net favorable position of $242,980. And some of that is made up of the magnet school and Boag transportation tuitions, or that, we budgeted 100% for, but now we were only paying out 58%. But having stated that we have this proposed net favorable position, we have some special education expenditures that are cresting, so we're keeping a watchful eye on those, so don't get too excited about this money. So, so basically, yes, we received the, the invoices, we know what the enrollment was, so that's how I came up with what was available. The capital improvement fund was doing the track replacement, and I believe that is finalized, I think we're just waiting for the final invoice to come. The reserve for educational expenditures, we're still working on the middle school ADA baseball field project, and that is almost as substantial, well, it is a substantial completion, but there's, I think, two punchless items left that are still pending, but I think they were working on it last week, so I think we're almost there. And then, as I stated, pupil services is watching their budgets closely right now due to IEPs and any changes that are happening. Are there any questions? And I believe there was one via email, yes, there's a man coupon, we had a human event happen. We do accounts receivable to book the, the revenue coming in that we're, that we budgeted for, and we just sent out the invoice with special ed services, and so neither myself nor my accounting director reversed the original accounts receivable, so that just inflated the revenue for tuition.
Okay, I didn't quite follow that, but.
Yeah, we caught it.
It was a mistake. So, so this number is wrong that's on here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, you'll get the next one in next month, it'll be.
Which number is incorrect?
The tuition one, it's inflated.
Under revenue?
We received 400.
400,000.
Somewhere in that range. Tuition, tuition, tuition.
We're only expecting 190 for the year.
Yeah, we're getting a little bit more because we actually had another school system that, I think it's a TCF placement that we had to invoice for, so we, we are getting a little bit more, but not that much.
Yeah, that's a lot. Well, I thought maybe the, you know, budgeting season happened before Columbia.
No, no, no.
You know, and, and that, that could have, you know, counted a fair bit of that, but.
So in the tuition adjustment, 58%, is that what counts from the 150,000? That's only a portion of this total tuition, right?
Yeah, there's, yes. Are there any more questions? Okay, moving on to 10.7B, which is the food service monthly sales and expenditure reports. So as you can see, we realized another loss of $57,436.49 in totality since we've started. But as you can see, the August is what, I guess, tripped us up this year, for lack of a better word, because that was a, a large influx of expenditures without having any revenue to offset that, but we're still doing good, we still have a positive fund balance. So, and we're doing our best to ensure that student participation is increasing, and we are having an admin review this year with the State of Connecticut's gonna come out and oversee our high school and the interschool agreement with Marlboro Elementary School to make sure that we're doing everything we're supposed to be doing in accordance with state and federal laws. Are there any questions that the board may have?
So this exhibit now includes Marlboro.
Correct.
Expenses and.
Expenses, and income, but it does, but it does not include their former food service account that they had on their side.
So was that a positive number or a negative number?
They, I think they had 21,000 if I remember correctly.
Positive.
Positive.
And they just kept it?
Yes, but so, but if there's, yeah, but if there's expenditures that need to come up, they have to use that money first. So they, so there's a pro-rata share that we would, that we agreed to when we signed the interschool agreement. So anything that is in our coffers currently, they have to use up their coffers before they reach into these coffers.
Oh, okay. Interesting.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, 10.7C is the RAM middle school and high school student activity account. The balances are in balance with Webster Bank, this is more so informational for the board. Are there any questions that the board may have on that? Hearing none, enclosure 10.7D, which is the short-term investment fund. As everyone will note, I had to take out $340,000 from this account so that we can pay both the ADA and the track invoices, so we do have a very nice $202,000 available. I am going to do a deeper dive to make sure that we know exactly, because when I arrived at RAM eight years ago, there was about 32,000, that it wasn't identified for anything, so we rolled it over to capital because the general fund's not supposed to have a recurring balance. So, so I just wanna make sure that, moving forward, the board might need to allocate funds to, to projects or even unallocated, just to make sure that we know where those funds are supposed to be. Are there any questions that the board may have on that? Thank you very much.
Okay, informational items, Colin?
Yeah, so we've got a lot of things coming up, it's hard to believe it's almost Thanksgiving, and then soon will be a winter recess. We've got Thanksgiving coming up, obviously, pretty shortly. We've got things coming up, we have our national oversight induction, seal of biliteracy, there was a question about what the seal of biliteracy is. Seal of biliteracy is an opportunity for students to demonstrate a, a high level of proficiency in, in a second language. If, if students are able to, and, and so they get tested on the second language, and if they're able to demonstrate that they have that strong aptitude in the second language, they, it's, it's something that they can put on college applications, job applications, they are recognized at graduation, I think they get a tassel, they get a little asterisk next to their name if they said they earned the seal of biliteracy. It's just, it's a really, really, it's a, it's a feather in their cap, it's a, it's a really beneficial thing for, for students to go through that process to get. You know, again, fundraiser's going on, we've got, we're gonna end up having a winter concert coming up, it's hard to believe because we just had our fall concert, we've got winter concert coming up, and they're working already on, I think they're doing auditions too for the, for the play that'll take place in the spring, so there's already gearing up for, for things. We've got a little two-week reprieve right now in between fall sports and winter sports, where our, our last season with football is gonna be ending, but then fall sports will kick into the year as well. And then the disciplinary reports for both high school and middle school are at the end of your packet. That's it.
Any, any questions on any of that? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I gotta split you up into one and two.
I'll take two, huh?
Your golfing was two. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anybody wanna abstain? Okay, thank you.
We should abstain, just to make a deal.
Hey, I'm gonna be in a meeting where somebody objects to a.